Kendra Baldridge, Joan Harris. Are we joining you?
I am joined by Joni, but that's fine.
And Cheryl Hobson. So we're going to have questions that have already been written. The candidates have all had the copy of those already. So they're all prepared. So we will get started.
We're going to start with Mr. Brewer.
Yes.
What qualifies you to run for city council and why have you chosen to run?
Okay. We're going to do introductions at all first line or part of it.
That's part of it. This is your introduction.
Thank you. This is my going.
I don't know. It should be over.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Matt Brewer, and I've been on council for four years. Just a kind of quick introduction of who I am and my background and how long I've been in Keachai. I'm from Kansas City originally, born and raised. A little bit of my educational background, went to Calvary University in Kansas City. And I like to joke I didn't know if I wanted to be a preacher or a teacher. So I have a degree in Bible and theology and a degree in secondary ed math. And I chose teaching high school math over the others. So I taught high school math for five years and then spent 10 years with a company in Kansas City doing sales, marketing, and management. And then after that, went back to school, got a master's in educational administration, became the high school principal at Kansas City Christian, did that for five years. And then I love to share this part of my story. In 2005, my wife and I, which I'll tell you a little bit about my family in just a second, we sold our house and belongings and took our 14-year-old, 12-year-old, and nine-year-old and moved to the Philippines for two years and taught in an international missions school with New Tribes Missions. It was the coolest adventure we ever went on. People thought we were crazy, but it was one of the coolest things we ever did as a family. Came back to the States in 2007 and we came to Keachai. I came to Wichita to be the high school principal and headmaster at Trinity Academy, where I spent 10 years at the school. And then after 10 years at Trinity, I pivoted again and went into the corporate world. And for the past six years, I've worked at Equity Bank as their first corporate training manager and director of talent development. Just recently, I pivoted within Equity Bank and I'm the new business development officer for their trust and wealth division. So that's a little bit of my educational background and professional background. One of the best things from college was I met my wife, Mary, and we have been married for 38 years. She has been with Department of Defense, teaching a STEM program at McConnell called Starbase for the past 10 years. She teaches STEM to fifth graders. We have three adult kids that are married. And the best part of my bio is we have six grandkids, five and under. So that is a lot of noise. Now, a little bit of my story, if you saw anything in the paper, May 15th, I was diagnosed with a brain tumor. On July 13th, I had that removed at KU Med. So I'm doing very well. I am deaf in my right ear, so I asked to sit on this side so any noise I can hear is coming from this part of the room. But I did find out last week, it does come in handy when we have all the grandkids around. So that's a little bit about my background. What qualifies me to be running again for city council? I've been on the council for four years. I've seen the budget cycles. I've got to serve with some great people, some that are here tonight. Betty and Margaret, Brian and Richard and Todd, Mayor Spears back there, great people in our community. I also am involved in some other community things besides Keachai City Council. I'm on the Board of Trustees at Calvary University, where I did my undergrad. And the past six years, I've been on the Sedgwick County Leadership Committee for Big Brothers, Big Sisters. And I serve on an advisory board for the Banking Institute Business School of Fort Hays State. So that's a little bit of my community involvement. So in answer to your question, what qualifies me to be on city council? I think it's just been my leadership experience and the things I've been involved in. I was talking recently with an individual about city governance and it's like the Board of Trustees that I set on for Calvary University. It's a stewardship responsibility of your resources. And we hire staff and we delegate things to that staff to implement things around the city. We hold them accountable, but it really is a stewardship responsibility. So that's my background. I don't know if I covered everything you wanted. I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. Ms. Baldridge, say it again.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kendra Baldridge. I do not speak as eloquently as Matt does, so I've prepared something, but yeah, bear with me as I read through it to try and keep my thoughts in order. So I was born and raised here in Keachai. This town is very special to me because it's where my father asked a group of his friends to help him build a house for my mother as a wedding gift. And once it was built, they got married in the backyard. And that was 30 years ago, and they still live here. My husband and I have been together for nine years and married for two, and we have two cats that I adore. My husband and I plan to raise a family here. I can't imagine calling anywhere else home. We spend a lot of time taking care of our Airbnb on Foreman Avenue. And I also run a wedding rental business called White Dove Rentals, where I decorate and style weddings. As you may know, I was appointed to council to fill Rachel Tremble's seat. And I started volunteering for the fair committee and attending council meetings. Someone needed to step up and I decided to make that commitment. My background is in the legal field. For the last six years, I worked at a law firm that specialized in commercial litigation, taxation, probate, real estate, and estate planning. I recently moved to a tax firm and now I'm a department coordinator where I assist the head tax attorney with our department of more than 100 employees. I believe that my willingness to learn and serve Keachai should make me qualified to be in this seat. I'm just, I'm looking forward to the future and ready to learn.
Thank you. Ms. Harris?
Hi, I'm Joni Harris. My husband Blaine and I and my mother Pat moved to Keachai just over a year ago from Washington State so we could live near our daughter, our son-in-law, and our grandkidos. Growing up in the Air Force, the importance of serving our country was impressed upon me from an early age. Living a life of faith in Jesus, who said the second greatest commandment, to love our neighbors as ourselves, continues to guide my desire to serve others even sacrificially. I've served in various ministry roles over the years and engaged in volunteer services in communities we've lived in. I was a 4-H Club leader and a county leader for the 4-H program we were part of. I've been employed by a Chamber of Commerce. I was involved with an agricultural land issue, city council issue in a city we lived in that had gone on for many years. And I provided accurate information to help end the city council's inappropriate spending of taxpayer dollars when it was proven to be factual that there was no course of action that the city council could take to overturn the land preservation. I began attending Keachai City Council meetings in January 2023 to learn how government operates in Kansas. I've listened and observed council business as well as the budget process. I've attended planning commission meetings, council workshops, and community conversations. I've asked questions and more questions and engaged in conversations. I've given input at many public forums. And recently, I brought up nine points to the city council that have been discussed throughout this year of meetings and asked for updates. I've learned quite a lot thus far, but I know that this is just the beginning. And at that meeting, I was thankful that Thomas Bevan gave several public work updates in response to my inquiries. I try to have conversations with as many people as possible in our community, whether we agree or disagree. I'm a grassroots kind of girl and I love to have conversations with the people. Relationships are vitally important to me and there is much to learn from those who have been residents in Keachai for various lengths of time and also from those who have served Keachai in the past. And this summer, when several city issues arose, I realized the need for the people of Keachai to have someone share information with them, pose questions to them, and inquire what the people of Keachai want. And the people responded. Our city is facing a variety of issues, financial, future growth, utility infrastructure, city park, and more. And transparency and communication are great needs in our community, even more so when those conversations become restricted or censored. Keachai is at a crossroads in determining which way the city will proceed into the future. What do the people of Keachai want? Updated play equipment and maintenance done for parks, preserving our small town and its character, keeping taxes low, maintenance done for parks, maintaining our infrastructure, single-family homes with mainly owner occupation and adding sidewalks. I will commit my time and energy to learn more about city operations, make difficult financial decisions, prioritize what is important to the residents of Keachai, continue asking questions, and share information with the community and engage in conversations. I feel like serving on the city council is a willingness to serve and to learn. And all of this will enable me, if elected to the city council, to make the best informed decisions possible in representing the people of Keachai because it's our town and it's important that the people's voices be heard in Keachai.
Thank you. Ms. Hobson?
Hello, everyone. My name's Cheryl Hobson. My family and I have been residents of Keachai for the past eight years. I am a Kansas native, living in Wichita or the vicinity all of my life. I graduated from South High in 1982. I have an associate's degree in electrical engineering from Butler County Community College, a bachelor's from Friends in Business, and an MBA from Baker University. I also have an arts background. I attended WSU for about five years prior to switching to business. And it was on a music scholarship. I played violin. And I still play in a band, The Boomers, where I play fiddle and keyboards. Today, I work at Spirit, Spirit Aero Systems as a continuous improvement manager. And I have 37 years of combined experience in business at Honeywell, Simplex, Drenell, and Johnson Controls, all of which I was managers and department managers running million-plus-dollar departments and in charge of their P and L. My family and I thoroughly enjoy living in Keachai. We love the quietness and the friendliness and the artsy vibe of this town. My spouse Terry and I regularly take our daughter Addison and our little dog Zoe for walks around the park. And we've talked to many of you as we've gone on these walks. So what does it make me? I guess, what did you say was the question again? What was the?
What qualifies you to run for city council at this time?
What qualifies me? I love this town. It is a town that I feel very strongly about for my family, my family's safety, my daughter's special needs. And I feel like that we have a lot of potential. We have passion. We have art. We have creativity. We have people here that care and care a lot because they've been here for a long time. All I want to do is to bring that voice to everyone so that we look at our, the things that we've already done, like public surveys, and found out what it is that our people want and what we don't want. And I just want to bring that voice forward to the city of Michigan, to the administration, to, to, to the rest of the, the Keachai family and say, hey, you know, this is what, this is what we need to stay on track. This is what we need to do. This is what we said we wanted. And this is what we said we wanted to do. So I also think that because of my business background, that I'm very responsible fiscally. I'm conservative fiscally. And I don't want to spend money that we don't have. So I think it's very, very important that we all work together on what it is that we need to spend our money on and that we know, all of us, what we spend our money on. So I'm just here to be a steward and to bring your voice forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brewer, we'll start with you again. And each of you, for the next five questions, will have two minutes for your response. First question is, what would be your pet project, Mr. Brewer, to improve the city of Keachai and how would you fund it?
Okay, so we, we got the questions in advance. And the phrase "pet project" has really been bothering me because I don't have a pet project. You know, I've worked with school boards, I've been on boards, I've been in leadership roles. And one of the things I have found in leadership is agendas can get you derailed really quickly. And so when I think about pet projects, I'm thinking more about stewardship responsibilities. I'll give you an example. A couple of years ago, we had a situation in Keachai where we began to see our police department fall apart. And we were down to just a couple officers. Well, my passion at the time was seeing us rebuild our police departments and to get it staffed again to the level that we were at because our first and foremost responsibility is the safety of our community. I looked this up today, about 25% of the people that live in Keachai are under the age of 18. That's a lot of families. That's a lot of children. And so I was very passionate, so you say "pet project," at the time, I was very passionate about us finding a great leader, knowing how important leadership is, to bring to our police department and to see us rebuild that, to bring back credibility to the police department, to the city, and just that feeling of safety and security in our community. So we hired Chief Brayden Moore. I don't know if you've met him or not, but if you get a chance to meet him, he's an outstanding individual. We've seen the police department get restaffed to where it needs to be. And so I think of that as an example of a pet project. Now, one of the things that has come up in our recent budget cycle has been infrastructure issues. And I know there's some questions later about sewers, so I'll wait to, to talk about that then. But that's one of my concerns right now, is to address issues before they become crises for the city to face, like we did with the police department. I would love for my pet project to be that we would never raise the mill levy or never raise taxes, but again, it comes back to stewardship responsibilities. So I think the pet project question is, what, what are we facing today?
Thank you. Ms. Baldridge?
So my proposed pet project is less political, I guess. I would love to see improved communications between all of the civic groups, so like Betty with Arts Council and the Chamber. At the end of the day, each of their goals is to improve communications, or I mean, to improve the community and businesses and arts, et cetera. I think that the groups would collaborate to be even more successful for the city. There's a lot of history and helpful information that each of the groups has, but that maybe new members don't know. So I'd like to spend the time getting to know all of these groups and everyone in those groups to be able to share that with the community. I slowly started getting involved in civic groups, but I am very passionate about volunteering for Keachai. It's clear that there is a need for dedicated volunteers and that's what got me interested in all of this in the first place, so that's what I'm going to continue to do.
Thank you. Ms. Harris?
Yeah, I'd have to agree. The term "pet project" was very problematic for me. I don't believe that elected officials should have anything called a "pet project." I've heard our former city administrator indicate she had a pet project, which was a city park. And another, the former administrator before her, also had a pet project, which was 60% Oliver. As a city council member, my role would be to serve the people and oversee city, or city government and bring forward what's important from our community. And I too have really found that communication is very lacking. And as many of you know, I've taken that upon myself to start changing that. The, the city has not been able to increase communication. They have had restraints budget-wise in hiring a communication person. And so therefore, I determined that it was time just as a citizen to take action. And so my husband and I started a Facebook page called We the People of Keachai to have an accessible social media location to share relevant city business information, where the residents can receive information and determine how they will or if they want to respond to something. It's not for me to tell anybody how to think. It's actually for me to hear what the residents have to say. In addition, my husband livestreams city council meetings to make meetings more accessible and give residents the opportunity to hear what is happening in those city council meetings and then they're able to watch it according to their schedule. I've had a lot of feedback that people really appreciate, the fact that we have increased, that I've increased communication, sharing city business information with people. And many of them have, I've had people come to me and say, I've lived here for 12 years, I've never heard anything. I've lived here for 20 years, I've never even been to a council meeting. So it's actually encouraged our community to begin getting involved in our civic processes here. And we really, my husband and I really consider it's a vital, important service to our residents to even have access to be able to watch city council meetings so that they can become more informed. And in addition, people have said they still need more access. Some people are not on social media. And so I've just recently established a new community email list that will also send out business information to the citizens. I really believe that increased communication and greater transparency improves residents' knowledge of what is happening in their city and it empowers them to engage in the civic process.
Just a few little time moments, over 30 seconds.
Yep. As they feel led to do so. And this is at no cost to the city, which was part of the question as well, what would cost the budget? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hobson?
Yes, myself as well. I, I had a problem with the, the "pet project" term because my pet projects are going to be your pet projects, what you want. That's, that's what I want. So, you know, part of it would be the sewer, if there is a problem with the sewer, you know, absolutely. You know, that should be the first on our list, is to get that taken care of. After that, then yes, let's look at what the surveys have said, what you have said, what I've said, what, what our neighbors have said, which is, you know, we want sidewalks, we want some park maintenance, we want some park upgrades, maybe we want some, you know, it's what, it's what we've said that we've wanted. And those are going to be my pet projects. It's the ones that you want. It's the ones that I hear when we're taking walks around the park and we stop to talk to, you know, all the neighbors there with dogs, you know, and, and kids. And, you know, some people want, you know, an ADA compliant playground. And I think that would be fantastic. Can we afford that right now? No. We can't. That's unfortunate. But with some planning and with prioritization, organization of our finances, then you know what, I believe we can, but later on down the road. So let's don't lose sight of all the things that we can do for our city. Let's don't lose sight of that. We may not be able to do that today. We may be able to just do the things that we have to do today. But let's have prioritization and organization and be fiscally responsible. We don't want to raise taxes because that's hard on everybody, especially people with families and fixed incomes and, you know, this is not the, we're not the Beverly Hillbillies here, right? We don't have oil and we don't, you know? So I think that if we could just have a prioritization on, on the projects that we want to do, that that's what I'm going to work for. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brewer, second question. What specific steps would you take to develop the business and economic growth in the city of Keachai and how would you fund it?
So I think first of all, that question, as you think about economic growth, the first thing that you have to put above everything else is meeting the current needs of our families in Keachai today. So you've got to prioritize that first. What do we need to sustain and maintain who we are today? I was going to mention this later on, but as a school administrator, I had the opportunity to travel to a lot of small cities in the central plains, cities like Medicine Lodge and Conway Springs and Garden Plain and places like that. And today, those cities, I've been here 16 years, those cities have really declined in population and in growth. So I think it starts by, first of all, taking care of our current families and the needs that they have. And that has a lot to do with maintaining our infrastructure. For a city that had its first post office in 1888, we're a pretty old town. So there's lots of things that, that need to be addressed in, in who we are as far as operating fiscally and, and maintaining, sustaining what we have. So we have, I don't know if you've been out on Keewee Street, but we have shovel-ready land out there for business development. Utilities are there. We have shovel-ready land for business development out on Keewee Street. James Mason Enterprises is one of our newest neighbors out there. So we've got great opportunities out there. My personal opinion is, and of course you want to listen to the people we represent, is I would really like to maintain the integrity of our arts and business district, keeping the, the growth here or organic growth, that's growth as it comes, not franchises, but locally-owned businesses. What do we do to attract them to our arts and business district? I'll talk about this a little bit more later, but I, I think that's kind of the sweet spot of who we are as Keachai and sustaining that and maintaining that. But as far as economic growth, as I said, we have shovel-ready property off Keewee Street to grow the city there.
Thank you. Ms. Baldridge?
I actually did not know that about Keewee Street. That's great. So Kami had brought up, our past city administrator had brought up possible economic development incentives at a past meeting. Nothing has been presented to council yet, but I would be open to this. I honestly don't know how this would look for the city in terms of the budget, but I know there's a lot of interest for businesses to come to or start in Keachai. So that's something I would be supportive of.
Thank you. Ms. Harris?
I'm going to come from a little different perspective. I did a little research and according to the city of Keachai website, under economic development, the city administrator is the primary employee tasked with executing economic development and projects. Under the Chamber of Commerce, the civic group who's hosting tonight, their mission is to promote and develop our business community. And their vision is to come together as a unified group, nurturing the welfare and economic growth for the city. And in doing so, businesses strengthen their role in the community, provide effective leadership for civic and commercial advancement, plus cultivate a better life for the residents of Keachai. And the city council's role as the governing body, these elected officials establish policies for the organization and implement community priorities. Specific responsibilities include obviously ordinances, resolutions, appointing certain employees, approving appointments to positions, reviewing budgets, fees, contracts, monitoring programs. In addition to those things, when zoning issues would come to the city council, I will weigh the strategic plan, the arts and business district master plan, and consider what is in the best interest of the people of Keachai. Therefore, my focus will be to understand and learn more about city policies and look at the city through a holistic perspective, overseeing that the city is operating according to those established policies and procedures, and doing my due diligence in new business that comes before the council, and working with our community and the city staff to best prioritize what is important to the residents of Keachai. And I will encourage and recognize our city administrator and the Chamber of Commerce as they accomplish their defined roles in the area of business development and growth. So I too am very supportive of organic growth. This question I just struggled a little bit with, just seeing the definitions of what the role is of different groups and employees and the governing body for the city of Keachai.
Thank you. Ms. Hobson?
Yeah, I'm going to take a little bit of a different stance. I think that we, as a community, have a lot of really good ideas as to what we want here in Keachai. I think that- I think that we all have a lot of different contacts. You know, our lives have taken us into different paths. I play in a band. I have a lot of different contacts with a lot of different people. People who would want to open up a coffee shop, maybe. You know, maybe somebody who would wanna open up a restaurant. I can give contacts, I can bring them to the city council. I can get people that want to do something, you know, a little artsy, a little different, a little unique, which is what we are. Let's bring them here. Let's do some brainstorming sessions. Let's get our community together and get some community involvement. We all have great ideas and none of us is as smart as all of us. So I think this is a town initiative. If we want to grow our town, then let's get together and decide how we want to do it. This is a town of good people, of really bright people, of really creative people, a lot of talent. Let's dig into that and see what we can come up with.
Thank you.
Maybe it's a go first again.
Where do you see opportunities for the city of Keichai budget improvements?
So with a lot of organizations, your biggest expense is, does anybody know? People. It's personnel. And our greatest expense for the city of Keichai is our personnel cost. We have budgeted right now for 18 employees. We currently have 15, I think, employed at the time. But if you think about the recent mill levy discussion we had, one mill is equivalent to $30,000. So if you think about adding one employee at, let's say, a median income of $50,000 to $60,000 with benefits, that's two mills, right? So when you talk about personnel costs, there's not a lot of wiggle room because of the cost of personnel. So, but there are places that I believe the council has talked about where there's opportunity to look at our budget. And I'm gonna go out on a limb, and I think one of those is what we spend in engineering costs. Last year, we spent almost $500,000 approximately on engineering costs. We've had discussions at the council before, is it better for us to hire our own city engineer and have those things stamped or to be contracting with someone else to provide our engineering for us? So the question is, where do you see opportunities to improve the budget? Off the top of my head, since I only have a couple minutes, is our engineering costs. We spend way too much on outsourced engineering. And I think that we can take a different approach to that.
Thank you. Ms. Aldrich?
That's a great answer and I also agree with it. But honestly, some of these questions, I don't know the answer to. I just don't know enough information about our city budget yet. I mean, it's still being fairly new. I don't have that much time to like dig through, like Joni. But I mean, I'm definitely willing to spend the time to learn about our budget and find where we could make cuts. And I also think that we should maybe assess where all of the funds and the expenses that are being paid out from them. That's still something I'm learning about from our city administrator, but hopefully get to learn more about that with the new one.
Thank you. Ms. Harris?
I have yet to see a city budget in its fullness, only parts of it. I would desire that the new city council make it a priority to thoroughly examine the city budget, much as Kendra's just mentioning, so we can go through line by line, especially during this time of rampant inflation and economic challenges, to determine and prioritize city services and be engaged with our community to know what is most important to them. You just can't make an informed decision if you don't have information to make a decision. I do also have concerns that the budget is 75% personnel costs and that it's been going up annually approximately 30% a year. And how is that sustainable for Keichai? Until there's really a time, though, to comb through the budget, I can't make an informed comment on how to improve the budget. One thing, though, I do hold in my personal position is that every person in Keichai lives on a finite budget and the city also has to live within their budget. It shouldn't be an automatic response that if the city needs more money, that the city council needs to raise the mill levy. The simple answer is not to require more of our citizens. I just wanna highlight with the budget, saying just a couple things. Thomas Bevan, head of Public Works, found some creative solutions for some projects. An example was like, we need to replace utility meters. And he found that if he just got a few a year, he wouldn't need a huge amount of money all at once, but he could break that cost up. So there's creative ways that we can impact the budget positively. Also, Hafman Road needs to be fixed. He can make it safe, but he doesn't, we don't, he doesn't need all the money all right now to repave the whole thing. Instead, he can wait until the entirety of the road needs to be redone and we can plan for that in the future. So those are some of the things. I really appreciate Thomas's efforts to help with the impact of the budget on what we need for our public works. It has been stated again and again by our former city administrator that our property taxes are low and our mill levy is low and that we really need to get the mill levy up, similar to the towns that surround us. Is that what the people of Keichai want? And what are the people of Keichai willing to pay for and what are they not willing to do? So my hope is that as we go forward, our new city administrator will align with those desires of hearing from the people and working together with the city council to find creative solutions for the financial challenges that face Keichai.
Thank you. Ms. Hudson?
Well, I think that, excuse me, with my background in running P and Ls and my current role as a continuous improvement manager, which I've done that for actually the last 20 years, this is exactly what I do. So I haven't seen the budget either. I've looked for it and I have not been able to find it. Not to say that I'm the best looker for that, but it wasn't easy, okay? So I couldn't, I don't know. So I can't tell you exacts. But what I can tell you is that there are some things that definitely would spark my interest. And that's just the things that I see. So as Matt was saying, PEC, they're a great firm. But we've used them a lot and we are a small town. I think that probably we need to take a look at that, just like what he was saying. I think we are probably utilizing them too much. I can't really tell you how much because I don't know, but that's where I would look. I'd also look at surveys and tools, any marketing companies that we are using currently. I think that probably for the size of town that we are, that we made from the looks of the materials, even though they look great, I think that we may be a little bit over budget on that and that we could probably do better as far as quality and for value for our dollar. And that's what I will do. I will look at value for our dollar and be able to look at exactly, as Joni was saying, line by line. We need to take a look at each one of our expenses, make sure that that is something that is absolutely needed at this time. What are the consequences for not having these expenses? Where can we get these expenses cheaper for the same quality, if possible? And that's what I'll do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brewer?
Yes?
The current Keichai sewer system needs repairs and upgrades. How would you propose funding the needed repairs and how urgent do you see this as being?
We've mentioned Thomas's name several times and I wanna give just a big thanks to him publicly. If you don't know Thomas Bevan, our Public Works Director, he does an outstanding job and Earl and the guys that work for him do an outstanding job of trying to steward the city's resources to the best of their abilities. So the council was made aware, probably a little over a year ago, about some infrastructure issues with our sewer. And the concern was that we have groundwater leaking into our sewer. By the way, we pay to send that back to Wichita. And so we realized that we had an infrastructure issue because of the amount of sewage that was going back and that was increased whenever we would have rains. Does that make sense? And so we had places that was leaking. We addressed the most critical ones as quickly as we could. I would say that we're not in a crisis right now, but I think that we need to be intentional about an immediate need to be reviewing and looking at what infrastructure hotspots need to be fixed. Does that make sense? Not thinking clearly, sorry. I'm thinking about fixing a sewer cave is what I'm thinking about. So in answer to your question, is Thomas has done an excellent job of addressing those issues, keeping the costs down. And I'm really excited about him working with our next city administrator to come up with some different solutions than some of the ones that have been proposed because I think there's an opportunity to fix some of these things at a much lower cost than what was communicated previously. So in answer to the question, I think this is an issue, as Joni said, for the city administrator and the Public Works Director to work together to find solutions to bring to the council, for us to look at and decide on how we provide, how we maintain and sustain what we have today, but also have a system in place for that growth, for that organic growth when it comes our way. So it's not just fixing what we have, but it's thinking down the road as well.
Thank you. Ms. Aldrich?
So it's my understanding, we've already voted on repairing the urgent sections of the sewer. So we can continue to operate at our current capacity, but it will not support new development, which is my understanding. Like the proposed development at 69th and Oliver, it would be ideal for this expense to fall on the developer, but I know it's not realistic. As for the sewer and water master plan presented by PEC, I think we need to exhaust all of our options before moving forward. We have some time to dissect the plan to see if it's the best route for us. The water and sewer issues we're facing is a perfect example of why it's important for us to save for in the future. It's evident we will have to raise taxes for the repairs.
Thank you. Ms. Harris?
Okay, this has been one of the big issues I've been following. I've been listening to information regarding the sewer repair needs throughout this year. The emergency stuff that we need, or priorities that we need to take care of is already in process to the engineering and I'm hopeful that bidding begins soon and the work's completed by next year. I was at the Water and Sewer Master Plans presentation on July 13th with PEC. These plans presented a full system overview in a very long range of time of up to 50 years. What it didn't include was an each line survey and priority list, cost of repair and recommendations. I've asked the city council on October 12th, just last week, in the public forum to request that Thomas Bevan create a report per line, which is line one to the west, line two central, and line three is to the east, with each line what the needs are and the related costs, if those are known. In addition, number four, I consider the future expansion to the east for future growth. And if he doesn't have that information, requesting that PEC provide that information as it wasn't included in the master plans presented to the city. I've also requested the council to have PEC give the cost and location for one treatment plant as what was brought forward, it was brought forward by the previous city administrator following PEC's original presentation of two water treatment plants. She said that it was determined that we only need one in Keichai and yet the city council has no information to consider that option nor the costs involved in that. I also requested information from the council via Thomas of what is needed to fully repair our existing water and sewer infrastructure in Keichai because I think that's another option that we need to look at and not just including future growth. Again, the city council has to have information to make informed decisions. We need to know how urgent certain needs are, what condition the system is actually in and what priority repairs need to be done and how much they will cost. Funding opportunities can include grant applications, sewer utility fund, engaging in conversation with our residents regarding various scenarios that are facing us. And there's even the possibility of creating a capital improvement project and yes, that would likely mean a mill levy increase. But having said that, until we have more specific information, we're still talking in generalities instead of specifics regarding the needed repairs, the urgency and how that would be funded.
Thank you. Ms. Hudson?
Okay, so from what, the information that has been given at the council meetings, that I understand is that, and like Joni said, so it looks like, and also Kendra, that we do have money in the budget to work on urgent repairs. Okay, okay. So if we want to repair all the sewer system and provide for, I know we talk about future growth, but if we just want to provide for the residents of Keichai today, I think that's really where we need to spend a lot of our time and effort and money looking at. We are not, right now, to my knowledge, we are not, we do not have anybody that's wanting to build east to Greenwich. I'm not gonna be, unless I am not informed, which that could be, that, I'm not really looking at that right now. And if I was to look at that, I know that when I bought my last house before this one, that I had to pay specials. And those specials included sewer. I would expect the same of businesses that go out there. I don't feel comfortable as a resident of Keichai paying for their sewer to go in. Now, maybe there might be some sort of incentive. We'd have to look at that. But I'm certainly not, I didn't expect it when I bought my house and I'm not gonna make it, I'm not gonna make it easy and give millions of dollars to a company that's gonna build over by Greenwich. So I think there's a balance. And I think there needs to be a balance between future growth. We need to talk about that. But we also need to talk about what is it that we need to do to fix the sewer for the residents of Keichai that we have here today, residents and business.
Thank you. Final question, Mr. Brewer?
Yes?
Describe the city of Keichai as you see it today. Describe your vision of what the city of Keichai should be in 10 years. And finally, how will your involvement impact it?
Okay. This is not my notes. I was just thinking of this as you were seeing the question. Here's what I love about Keichai today. I had the unique opportunity of experiencing community like most people never get the opportunity to experience, having gone through my recent health crisis. Was off work several months, was at home every day. It was the community, it was the quiet community. It was my neighbors that made the difference. It was people bringing us meals. It was people doing yard work. It was people checking on us and going to the store. What is special about Keichai today is community. And not all of America can say that anymore. So Keichai is very unique in itself because we still have community. I've watched it just recently with the Fall Festival and people coming together. That's what makes Keichai special. So when I think about Keichai today, that's what I want Keichai to be for tomorrow. That requires stewardship on our end to make sure that we provide that for future residents and for future families that come to Keichai. I would like to see the unique style of who we are with Car Guard and Geno's and Old School and Eldersley Farm and things like that. But yet we have opportunity for revenue out of Teakla Street. Like I said earlier, just ready for businesses to move in. So when I think about Keichai today, Keichai tomorrow, I hope that Keichai tomorrow is exactly like it is today in some way. There's lots of things we have to work on. There's lots of things that need to be done. But what we have in the way of community is pretty unique. But what we have in the way of community is pretty unique in our country today. And not to get all teary-eyed, but we got to experience that.
Thank you. Ms. Baldridge.
And I too also love that Kichai is very much the same as it was when I was a kid. Not much has changed. And my childhood friend, who grew up a few houses down from me, moved back to Kichai and bought a house on the same street as our parents. That's the type of community that Kichai is. 30 years ago, my parents wanted to live just far enough out of the city to find their own peace and quiet. And 30 years later, that's still what Kichai has to offer today. I hope in 10 years, Kichai is the same small, small town atmosphere, but with new development in the Arts and Business District. I hope to see new growth on the boundaries where we are getting closed in on to generate more revenue, to keep up with all the necessary infrastructure repairs and maintenance. I hope my commitment to Kichai will encourage the younger generation to get involved and let them realize that their voice matters too.
Thank you. Ms. Harris.
The things I love about Kichai, small town, bedroom community, a safe place to call home. It's a slower pace of life, friendly neighbors. It's an escape from the city. I've met a lot of young moms who bring their kids up to the park because it's just a simple, quiet place to get away from the city. It's peaceful and quiet here. And 10 years from now, I would agree, I'd like it to basically be still the same as it is today. Perhaps 100 homes or end up being built up at 69th and Oliver. Be lovely to have a little restaurant and maybe a coffee shop. I've heard several residents indicate they'd love an ice cream shop to open here. I'd love to see organic business growth happen and additional arts and shops come to town. And I'm hopeful that the Kichai Square development on Oliver is completed and thriving. And I hope my involvement in Kichai increases communication significantly amongst our residents and more and more people get involved in our civic process. And community continues to grow even more because it's a huge, huge gift to be in a community. You just don't find that anymore. And in that 10 years too, I'm hoping that our water, sewer, and gas infrastructure maintenance and repairs, we've got done, that they're completed, that our city's in a healthier financial situation than today, that there's new playground equipment and the park is regularly maintained and that we have some more sidewalks. And that really the community comes together and I can help be a catalyst in encouraging the community to come together, you know, with all the talent that we have and all the creative ideas that Kichai will continue to be a place where people love to call home.
Thank you. Ms. Hobson.
I have a lot of the same aspirations for this, for this community and everybody else that was up here. I want it to be the same. I want to be able to walk down the street and I want, you know, Bill and his Kubota to still be there, right? Helping everybody do, move dirt and whatever they need to do. You know, Teresa's still down the street and just, you know, just all the neighbors. We can continue to walk to the park. Maybe by then, yes, we will have, you know, some, it'll be ADA compliant. We can have some new equipment. I also want us to be in a place financially that does not, you know, the taxes do not make the people who are here right now today, sitting in this room, not able to live here. We need to keep these taxes low. And we need to be able to plan for the things that I want and you want. The sidewalks, you know, it'd be great to have a coffee shop. I would love that. And it'd be nice to have some, to be able to go to Car Guard and say, hey, you know what? Let's work together and let's see what kind of light poles we can put up. If some of these light poles that we currently have right now out on the main street don't work, then, or in the park, then let's work together. You've got a lot of talent there at Car Guard. Let's see what we can do for that. What about, let's talk to people that, you know, let's talk to the owners of the quilt shops, of the Loom Studio. Let's talk to everybody. You know, let's see what we can do when we come together and what good ideas that we can have as a community. What kind of city help days can we have? What kind of clean up the park days can we have? What can we do as a community in the next 10 years to make it a better place?
Thank you, everyone. That ends our candidate forum for this evening. Feel free to mingle for a little bit, but thank you for coming out.
And we didn't get to thank you at the beginning.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Post-episode forum. Thank you for my appearance.